I would like to have a moment to talk about the people who worked in the city. We've had so many times in the week, some of them too violent, some of them violent, like the men in the rock. Paul O'Neill, like John O'Neill, one of the greatest writers for the Daily News. Paul did many, many, many years at Yankee Union Company, volunteer. Matt Eaton, thirty-three-year-old dude who passed away. There's another Karen Eaton, who was one of our pole workers, and his grandmother who passed away a couple of years ago, worked in pole workers, I think, what, sixty, sixty-five years? And the last one is Barbara O'Leary, who taught here for many years in the elementary school. She passed away a couple of days ago. So, Mr. Susan Brown, Paul O'Neill, Matt Eaton, and Barbara O'Leary. Thank you.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President.
President.
Counselor Cameron.
President.
Counselor Cronin.
President.
Counselor Gentman.
Yes, Councilor Earl.
President.
Counselor Agaman.
Here.
President.
Counselor Tontar.
Yeah.
There are no late filings. The council will see on their desk that in addition to the maps on the crocking dogs by class, there's also a handout from Counselor Tontar on amendments to the council. This has been taken out of the meetings of the council. There's really no official work.
Counselor Tontar.
Thank you.
Who?
Yes.
I think that's true.
Oops.
You have a new button.
Jan Orman.
Brian Callahan.
Hello, Brian Callahan, Twenty-Nine Warren Street. This is regarding the Moral Fund. I'm asking that some money go to the skate park, which is historically underfunded and was supposed to have money that was taken from youth services budget, and however that works, didn't happen. We need maybe $2,000 a year for maintenance. I think it's a pretty easy thing. I sent Counselor Cronin all the details. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it. Paul McConville, May's comment?
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present my update to you. Before we start on some of the other details, I just have to thank Rich Jones, Trish Barker, for an amazing, amazing job during this election season. Their work required a whole new level of involvement with the early voting, which was very successful with over 3,800 votes. But that also required them to separate them all by ward and then bring them out to each of the wards on Election Day and then insert them into each of the machines. So it was a much more complex process for them, and I would like to thank you on behalf of the residents of Newburyport and, I'm sure, the City Council for an excellent job. It was quite an election day. Congratulations to Representative Jim Kelkhorst, who will be returning as our state representative, and to Senator O'Connor-Ives and Congresswoman Moulton. We look forward to our continued work together. On Veterans Day, this past Friday, we hosted our annual Veterans Day event. Thank you to all the veterans and the families who attended. Kevin Hunt, our Veteran Service Officer, once again did a wonderful job in organizing the activities with the great turnout by the community, members of the City Council, Sheriff Cousins, Rep. Kelkhorst, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Honor Guards from the Coast Guard and Police Department, and the Newburyport High School band. I would also like to take a moment to recognize Counselor Cronin, who brought to the attention of the Veteran Service Officer, a veteran that turns 100 years old this week, Al Hirsch. It was a wonderful addition to our ceremony to recognize this remarkable man. Thank you, Counselor Cronin, for bringing his important centennial birthday to our attention, and it was wonderful to be able to honor him on the event. The Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce had their annual dinner and annual banquet on November 2nd with Lieutenant Governor Polito. We were fortunate to have her take some time to walk through our downtown, visiting small businesses prior to that event, and she was very complimentary of our city. The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, we work very closely with them as a city, and Dennis DeZaglio, who has been their executive director for the past ten years, has retired. You might also recall, he was the former mayor of Methuen. We wish him well, and we look forward to meeting their new director. I understand it's down to two finalists, and Ed Ramsdale, our Chair of the ZBA, is our representative to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and he will be letting us know how the outcome of these interviews go. Congratulations to the Newburyport Education Foundation for raising over $100,000 on Saturday for programs to support the needs of our Newburyport School District. Their current focus is enhancing the lighting and sound capabilities at the high school as well as expanding STEM initiatives throughout the district. Would also like to acknowledge that the Newburyport Teachers Association contract, after a very long, nearly year-long process of negotiations, has come to a close, and that the teachers ratified the contract on November 7th, and it was voted in by the school committee also that evening. The three-year contract provides for 1.25%, 2.25%, and 2.25% raises over the three-year life of the contract, and I'm also very pleased that, finally, coaches' stipends have been addressed in the teacher's contract, because we hadn't touched those stipends in well over a decade. So we now have competitive stipends for our coaches. Mainly upcoming events, there's a lot happening, but I'll talk about what's going on between now and our next City Council meeting. The joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Senior Community Center. As you know, this is required by our charter, where elected officials from School Committee and the City Council join together to receive a presentation from our Finance Director, Ethan Manning, who will give us an update on the fiscal status of our city before we begin the FY '18 budget. On November 16th at 6:30 in City Hall Auditorium, we will provide a public update on what's happening with the construction at the wastewater treatment facility to address the odor controls. Two major components, the clarifier covers. Those bids were opened last week, and I think that they came in at a good price. We'll be talking about that at the meeting. And we opened the biofilter bids, will be opened on Wednesday of this week. The intermodal facility got confirmation from Mass DOT, the Executive Director, that the $5 million that we were concerned about, the requirement to spend 2.5 million before the end of this fiscal year, they have given permission, since we are delayed, to move it out for the next two fiscal years, 2.5 and 2.5 million. So that was a very important piece. On November 17th at 7:00 PM at City Hall Auditorium, Desmond Associates will be presenting 30% Design and the cost estimates to the public. There'll be an opportunity for the presentation, some public feedback, and certainly there will be changes that will be made as we move between 30% and 100%. On the 22nd, the NRA Waterfront Trust and the City will have a follow-up meeting at the Boardroom of the Senior Community Center to continue work on, follow-up work from what the council did over the last many months, that now has been picked up by the City to build consensus. I understand that the NRA did present their conceptual framework for a park at their meeting this past week, and they will present it also at this meeting on the 22nd. So wishing everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving and go Clippers.
Questions?
Thank you.
Want to present the agenda?
The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of the minutes. The minutes have been removed at the request of Counselor Cronin today, to be taken up
Aye.
Vote?
in the regular agenda.
Move on to communication 102. Ladies Night Out, run on December 3rd, 2016.
There are no transfers. There are four communications.
Removed at the request of Counselor Agaman.
First communication, 101, with respect to a walk, MS Walk for Newburyport on 4-1, 2017.
Motion to refer to public safety. Second. Discussion? Yes, Mr. President, thank you. The number of events occurring in Newburyport has been something that's been on the mind
That's to go to public safety.
of many counselors, and we had a meeting with Chamber Presidents this morning, not
Next communication, 102, Ladies Night Out, has been removed at the request of Counselor
about road races, of course, but about festivals.
Agaman.
You know, Counselor Cronin and I were there, Patty Moore from the Mayor's Office, and
Communication 103 is a letter regarding the Moral Foundation Funding Directive. That's to go to Budget and Finance.
Lois Honiger as well.
Last communication, 104, is a letter regarding the single tax rate from the Chamber of Commerce,
This particular application is one of the things that I wanted to talk about.
Jan Orman. That's to go to Budget and Finance.
It appears to be a for-profit entity with no apparent connection to Newburyport.
There are no appointments. That's the consent agenda with those two changes.
I know that in Counselor Cronin's committee, he'll give it attention, but I just feel,
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
three years into this job, I've always assumed that I should rubber stamp all these, and
Aye.
Vote?
First, I think we have the minutes taken out by Counselor Cronin.
I don't want to do that anymore.
Right.
It's a 400-person race, you know, I'm kind of tired of residents in Ward Two feeling
Motion to approve?
Second. As amended? Discussion?
like there's always an event with no oversight.
Counselor Cronin?
Thank you. If the clerk could just alter on page four, there's initials B.C., recused, and could
I'm not saying ban all events, ban all races, you know, end fun, but, you know, there are no porta-potties with this application, they're not hiring anyone to deal with trash. It's just, why?
you just spell the name out so there's no confusion?
You know, so I don't think there's enough information. I think we really need to change the way we look at these things.
I'd appreciate it.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I know I am from now on.
It's all of one.
Thank you.
All in favor? Discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Vote?
Aye.
Move on to communications.
Vote?
We need a motion to May's update to the city file. Move on to appointments.
So moved.
Second reading of appointments. Second. First appointment, 76 Jill Mary Brennan, 24 Webster Street, Haverhill, to the position of Assessor until January 1st, 2018. Next are two reappointments. Kathleen Chase, 2 Belcher Street, to Assistant Treasurer until 11/1, 2019, and Dr. Barry Spiro, 4 Lafayette Street, to the Disability Commission until 11/1, 2019. What we can take up at the same time, the following two. They're confirmatory appointments. The dates were transposed, meaning that instead of 2018, it was 19 and the reverse. First appointment is 71 Vaughn Abbott, 61 Prospect Street, to the Cultural Council, 10/1, 2018 is the correct date. Afrose Khan, 85 Prospect Street, to the same Cultural Council until 11/1, 2019. Those are the appointments.
Second.
Vote call? Discussion?
Collectively.
Vote call?
Counselor Vogel.
President. I, yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien.
President. Thank you. Move on to orders. First order is the supplemental budget request number one, which is tabled. Move to remove from the table? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Move to place back on the table? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Move on to order 84. Order 84 is to add Fruit Street to the two-hour residential zone, submitted by Counselor Agaman.
Motion to refer to public safety. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, very briefly. Having a community meeting on this topic. I don't rashly like to add blocks until we have a meeting of all the neighbors. It's being held at the Public Library on Tuesday, November 22nd, at 7:30, so everyone can get there after work. Everyone's invited, because Fruit Street's a very important street for transit, not solely for parking. I'm in a bit of a pickle, because I live near Fruit Street, so, you know, if people feel that that's a conflict for me to hold the meeting, I could defer to another counselor. I just want to flag the issue. I don't think it's a conflict, but there you go.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Move on to, there's no ordinances, so move on to committee items. Budget and Finance. Move to remove ordinance 16, Plum Island Utility Fund. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Move to amend? Second.
President, there are three amendments to the original ordinance. The first is the Scribbler's Correction. Paragraph C, the city hereby, the D is changed from established to establishes. In paragraph D, there is the addition. Originally, it said appropriations from this fund shall be made at the recommendation of the mayor. We have added and the Water and Sewer Commission, with the approval of a two-thirds vote of the City Council. And then section E is amended to read, "This section is adopted pursuant to the establishment of stabilization funds in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B." That uses the term stabilization funds, and it refers to the law. It was, the amendment passed 3-0 in committee.
Any further discussion? Counselor Agaman?
Mr. President, we also, the Committee on Public Utilities met jointly on this matter. It was referred to both, and we voted separately. We were not able to reach a recommendation. There were two of us with one absence that night. I think, for the sake of convenience, I'll continue with how I'm going to vote tonight. I'm going to vote present. The reason being, I fully endorse the settlement, and I recognize in the settlement, it says that we need to set up a fund, and it has to be earmarked for certain items. I guess this is my one opportunity, though, to register a complaint, which is that I'm grateful to the mayor for also introducing, which we can't take up tonight, but we will, two transfers. So the transfers must originate with the mayor and the Water and Sewer Commission, so, you know, we're passive on that. We can't compel them to come out, or in the mayor's office and the city solicitor. Those two are legal fees and reimbursement for some work involving piping at the Plum Island Bridge. I would have wanted to see more. I mean, frankly, I feel like the majority of ratepayers shouldered a burden in dealing with this crisis on Plum Island, and they're not being fully reimbursed. They're being partially reimbursed. I am, when the time comes, I will vote in favor of the transfer for the legal fee reimbursement and the work on those lines. But there are other things that weren't. You know, I haven't, we haven't seen yet the transfer on our insurance premiums, which may go up, who knows? There was staff time dealt with, emergency on Plum Island, and that staff that, while they were on the island, was unable to do work on the mainland. Also, another distinction, it's not just island versus mainland. I don't want people who live on the Newburyport end of the island to feel put upon, but the original deal, which was approved by the City Council, is an intermunicipal agreement. We had to vote on it, and it had all kinds of assumptions about how we were going to pay for things. And the basic assumption was that more households, more customers, were in Newbury that were going to benefit, and that's a fact. There are more Newbury households than there are Newburyport households on the island. And so when we confer a benefit on the Plum Island customers, and essentially, we're essentially, as I look at it, giving a free ride to the town of Newbury, which I feel uncomfortable with. Particularly when the tax revenues that have gone up on Plum Island because of the system, largely subsidized by mainland ratepayers, almost all redounds to the town of Newbury. And so I feel I have to say something. And so with that, I just wanted to signal my own personal view, I don't speak for anyone else on the committee, that I'm going to vote present. Thank you.
Counselor Zied?
Point of order?
Yes.
We are discussing the amendment.
Yes.
And not the ordinance as a whole, just the amendment. I'd like to see that pass, and then we can discuss the amendment as a whole.
I think you, I thought you related very well to the amendment, his reasons why he might be voting present. Counselor Zied?
Well, I can appreciate that. I'm just going to go ahead and, in some ways, partially respond to the Ward Two Counselor. I was the other member on public utilities, and it's been a tough road as we try, we tried our hardest to reach some consensus. I will say that last Thursday, when we last met, I was having a difficulty coming around to the establishment of the fund, but for a very different reason than my colleague, and that is that, you know, I really wanted to see the intent of this fund mirror what it is that's in my head, and I'll explain that in a little bit in a few seconds. So, but tonight, I stand up to support this order as it's written and as the amendments are presented by Counselor Tontar, Ward Three Counselor. This language is a direct reflection of what's in the settlement. So that's number one. I took some extra time to read the settlement again, and there really are a few things that I think the residents of Plum Island primarily would like to know from that, and that is, number one, is the idea here is really to dedicate these funds to Plum Island. And so that's something that I think is very important to the folks out there, but there's more to it than that. It may be very easy, standing here, I think, to forget about how bad the winter of 14 and 15 were. You know, I wasn't the counselor at the time, but I certainly watched it, and I've spoken with a number of residents about it, in fact, constantly. It was, it was really a disaster, and, you know, there are a lot of things that go into that, but I want to remind my colleagues of a few things from that 14-15 winter. Number one is, this isn't just a water, this isn't just a sewer issue. I think that a lot of times when we talk about this, we focus primarily on sewer, but there are several issues with water as well. We've had two major fires on Plum Island within the past three months, and so water is critical, both for a livability standpoint, but it's also critical from a public safety standpoint as well. So with that being said, for me, the intent of this order, and it really will be up to this council and future councils to enforce the intent, is that this money should be used proactively, not reactively, going forward. And so that means that, as Counselor Agaman, Ward Two Counselor, went on to talk about the transfers, we'll see in a few weeks, I don't think that these funds should be used retroactively for funds that have already been expended. I do reject some of the arguments about the difference between the ratepayers here on the mainland and the ratepayers out on Plum Island. I'd also remind my colleagues that the ratepayers on Plum Island not only pay the rates, they also pay a betterment against this system, which is not entirely unique to them, but certainly is something that should be taken into account. I also want to respond to folks in committees that mention that, you know, they're resentful of the entire system and wish it were never put in, and, you know, there's actually a lot of people on the island that I've spoken to that fit right into that category squarely. And unfortunately, we can't go back and change that. So as the Ward Counselor, I feel strongly that I owe the people on Plum Island representation here tonight, and I feel that we have a very strong duty, really morally and ethically, to dedicate these funds to fixing this thing so that going forward, it doesn't break again, or at least we mitigate the risk to the best of our ability to that, to that point. As we can't undo history, we can do things a little bit better going forward. I want to add to that, that I'm also the only Ward Counselor that has two responsibilities. I have responsibility out to the folks on Plum Island, I also represent mainlanders. So to respond to the Ward Two Counselor's point about the mainland ratepayers, the truth of the matter is, where we sit today, the Plum Island system is every single ratepayer's liability and every single ratepayer's problem, just in the same way that the rest of the system is everybody's collective issue. And one of the main concerns I have, and something we identified during committee, is that we actually don't know the full extent of this liability. We think we understand some of it. For example, when you talk physically, we know some things about the hydrants, there are already plans to move in that direction, but, and then there are already some ideas on the sewer side for repairs and improvements and so forth. On the water side, I think there are more question marks, and that means we really don't know how much and how long, or how long this money will last, or if it will last at all. So to those folks who are on the mainland who may be frustrated with Plum Island, I'm sorry, we can't take the system back. That's the first thing I'd say. And second thing is, as one who has to balance both of those things, saving this money is the most fiscally responsible thing we can do, because the worst thing we can do is fix it on an emergency basis. We will never make worse decisions financially or engineering-wise than when we try and fix it in the heat of the moment when it's broken. So with that, I'm asking for you to support this tonight. I think, obviously, I've sort of tipped where I'm going for the next one, but I knew that this was going to come up, and I felt a strong obligation to stand up for the folks on Plum Island and say, "Look, you know, this is what this money is really intended for. It's understandable that funds have been expended. Funds are expended every day by Water and Sewer to support this entire system. Plum Island is part of that system." So I'd ask you for your support tonight and for your consideration of these thoughts before our next council meeting where we take up the transfers. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Connell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unless you feel all alone, all the counselors at large share dual responsibilities to people on the island and the mainland, so welcome to the club. The reason I'm standing is really rather technical. I'm going to ask the Chair to respond, and that is, Article VI, Section D, has the disbursement being done through a joint recommendation of the mayor and the water commissioners. And my question, as I'm looking for controversy where none exists today but may in the future, what happens if they disagree? Do they make separate recommendations? Do they make a joint recommendation? How do you foresee that happening?
Counselor Tontar?
My understanding is that the recommendation will go forward only if it is recommended by both the Water and Sewer Commission and the mayor. So it's not or, it's not and/or, it's and. So if one or the other doesn't put the recommendation forward, then the recommendation doesn't come forward.
Yes, sir.
Then my suggestion, and I'd look to the clerk for some assistance here, since he's our resident wordsmith, for language to make clear that distinction, and maybe just the insertion of the word "both," recommendations of both the mayor and the Water and Sewer Commission with the approval of two-thirds of the City Council would resolve that, that muddiness, and I would make that as a recommendation, a friendly recommendation, if the Chair would accept it.
I'll accept it as a friendly amendment to the amendment if, since this came from committee, either one of the other two people were the second.
Can you say what the amendment to the amendment would be again?
Perhaps, and I defer to the clerk if he has a better idea. Go ahead. Just move.
A couple of thoughts. One, the word "both" could be inserted, so the recommendation of both the mayor and, but to Counselor Tontar's point, I think you're covered with the word "and."
Yes.
But "both" certainly doesn't hurt, clarifies.
Or recommendations of the mayor and water?
Of both the mayor and water.
Either one. Either an S after recommendations or a "both" after the word "of."
No, no, "either" and "both" don't mean the same thing.
No, not "either." The recommendation of both the mayor and...
No, I'm, I'm just saying, there are two ways to do it. Either put an S behind recommendation and make it recommendations.
So that I can do two recommendations.
Which implies two recommendations more clearly, or insertion of the word "both" after the word "of."
I'll accept the friendly amendment to put "both" in there.
Both either and or? Only both. Not only, just "both." I was further troubled by the two "ands." Is there a second on that?
Yes.
No, I, I said I accepted the friendly.
And I believe I had, I had seconded his original. Yeah. All in favor of the friendly amendment?
Aye.
Aye. I'll be brief, and I mean it. Just to echo what Counselor Zied said, you know, the real battles on this are going to be during the transfers, whether we should go back and fill in some of the money that was spent, or how to, how to spend this proactively. As you probably noticed, we'd spent a lot of time wordsmithing this to make clear, you know, we need a two-thirds vote to approve this, the creation of the fund, and before any money is transferred, you know, and then we need to transfer money into the fund, and then anytime we transfer money out, again, we need both the Water and Sewer and the mayor to make that recommendation, and then we've got to approve it by two-thirds, so this is not a simple transfer. You know, I mean, I, I think we, and maybe we'll be saying something different in 10 years, you know, we've got a decent amount in this settlement when we think of the things that are likely to go wrong, that we can fix proactively, but we really don't know. But I think this, this is, you know, pretty much what we've got. And again, I think the big arguments will be, when we did talk a little bit with Sewer Department, Jamie Tucolo, about things that he thinks are necessary, you know, we may be sitting on money for a while until we... Then, then my suggestion, and I'd look to the clerk for some assistance here, since he's our resident wordsmith, for language to make clear that distinction, and maybe just the insertion of the word "both," recommendations of both the mayor and the Water and Sewer Commission with the approval of two-thirds of the City Council would resolve that, that muddiness, and I would make that as a recommendation, a friendly recommendation, if the chair would accept it.
I'll accept it as a friendly amendment to the amendment if, since this came from committee, either one of the other two people were the second.
Can you say what the amendment to the amendment would be again?
Perhaps, and I defer to the clerk if he has a better idea. Go ahead.
I mean, a couple of thoughts. One, the word "both" could be inserted, so the recommendation of both the mayor and, but to Counsel Tontar's point, I think you're covered with the word "and."
Yes.
Both certainly doesn't hurt, clarifies.
Or recommendations of the mayor and water?
Of both the mayor and water.
Either one. Either an S after recommendations, or a "both" after the word.
No, no, either and both don't mean the same thing.
No, not either.
No, you got to pick one or the other.
The recommendation of both the mayor.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, there are two ways to do it. Either put an S behind recommendation and make recommendations.
So, that I can do two recommendations.
Which implies two recommendations more clearly, or insertion of the word "both" after the word "of."
I'll accept the friendly amendment to put "both" in there.
Both either and or?
Only both.
Not only, just both.
I was further troubled by the two "ands."
Is there a second on that? Yes.
No, I, I said I accept it as a friendly.
And I believe I had seconded his.
National.
Yeah.
All in favor of the friendly amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll be brief, and I mean it. Just to echo what Counsel Zied said, you know, the real battles on this are going to be during the transfers, whether we should go back and fill in some of money that was spent, or how to, how to spend this proactively. As you probably noticed, we'd spent a lot of time wordsmithing this to make clear, you know, we need a two-thirds vote to approve this, the creation of the fund, and before any money is transferred, you know, and then we need to transfer money into the fund. And then, anytime we transfer money out, again, we need both the Water and Sewer and the mayor to make that recommendation, and then we've got to approve it by two-thirds, so this is not a simple transfer. You know, I mean, I, I think we, and maybe we'll be saying something different in ten years, you know, we've got a decent amount in this settlement when we think of the things that are likely to go wrong, that we can fix proactively, but we really don't know. But I think this, this is, you know, pretty much what we've got. And again, I think the big arguments will be, when we did talk a little bit with Sewer Department, Jamie Tucolo, about things that he thinks are necessary. You know, we may be sitting on money for a while until we are sure of what we need, and again, I think those two-thirds votes will ensure that we're not squandering this resource.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
So, roll call on the motion to amend?
Are you doing the motion to amend? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both?
Motion to approve is amended, right?
It's already.
Yep. Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Earls.
Yes.
Counsel Agaman.
Present.
Counsel Junta.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
No.
Needing two-thirds, motion passes.
Anything else?
Yes, motion to remove transfer twenty-six, 2002 overlay to overlay surplus, $25,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
President, this, there's a surplus in the overlay account, which is intended for abatements. The estimate is it won't be necessary for that purpose, and the city is also undertaking a reevaluation, and the request is to transfer it for that purpose. It's been approved by the Finance Director. It passed three-zero in committee.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Yes.
Motion to remove transfer twenty-seven, budget contingency to multiple salary items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
The, the contract was not completeable when we were discussing the budget in the spring, but a contingency was created in anticipation that an agreement would be made, and so now we're transferring from the contingency fund in order to undertake those expenditures. This passed in committee, three to nothing.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion to approve transfer twenty-seven. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Earls.
Yes.
Counsel Agaman.
Yes.
Counsel Junta.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Present.
Motion passes.
Next.
Motion to remove order eighty-two, residential factor, second of the year 2017.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
I believe the motion to set the residential factor at one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
That's it, Mr. President.
That's it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of parliamentary inquiry, and I truly don't know the answer, so I'm looking for some wisdom here. Did the setting of track tax rate require a voice vote or a?
Roll call.
A roll call? I'll leave it to your judgment. I don't know the answer.
They want to set the tax rate?
For the, for the residential, you know, the tax.
The tax classification. You can have one if you want.
No, it's, it's your, I don't know if there's a parliamentary reason for it. No?
If you feel uncomfortable, we'll do it. It'll only take three seconds. Roll call.
This is to set the classification residential factor at one. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Agaman.
Yes.
Counsel Junta.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Join in.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we, we had the opportunity to meet with the school committee last Monday. We discussed a variety of topics. The first topic that we spoke was actually something that came from a resident. A resident last year had noticed how the recycling program at the Knott Coffee, at the Knott Cafeteria was not going off as well as at the Breznehan. So, we sort of checked in to see how the beginning of this year has worked out, and the superintendent told us that she brought parent volunteers in for the first four to six weeks, helped the kids transition into the program with the help of the staff, and then phased the parents out of the program. So, I'm not hearing any, any issues from, from the parents, so I'm assuming we're off and running at the Knott as well as we are at the Breznehan. The second item we talked about is a component of the strategic plan, which is professional development for the teachers. One of the things they noticed is that Election Day actually happens to be a very important day for the teachers in the fact that the majority of schools are closed across the Commonwealth, so there's a ton of workshops that are available for the teachers to go to, participate, and learn. One of the initiatives this year is they want the teachers in Newburyport to join a professional learning community focused on a specific topic. The topic does not need to be what they teach, it just needs to be something they're interested in. And these groups could comprise teachers from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade, depending if they have a common, a common interest. These groups will likely research their topics over the school year, and there may be grant money available from the state to find substitute teachers, so these teachers can actually go out to the community on a working day and learn more about their topics. We also talked about use of athletic fields on Sunday mornings, primarily times that they're not allowed to be used now. The, the school committee has a subcommittee that's actually going to revisit this process and, and find out, you know, exactly why do these rules exist, how do the neighbors feel about it, and get the, the community's involvement, because we definitely have a need for the use of the fields, but we do have some rules that have been placed, in place for many years. Currently, right now, if any individual group comes and asks to use a field at an off-time, they have been getting approvals, just because we need the field space so much. The school committee wanted to talk to us about unfunded mandates. They've, they tell us that there's $8 million worth of unfunded mandates that are on us from both the state and the federal government, and I will provide you with a customized list of unfunded mandates as how they affect Newburyport. They actually built a, a list that talks about our programs and what the costs that we bear due to these unfunded mandates. So, it's pretty interesting, so I'd like to just put it in as communication for you folks next week. We also discussed the relocation of the bus stop on the corner of Marlborough Street and Chestnut. There was almost an accident there a few weeks back. It appears the bus stop is in a spot where it's dangerous and should be moved, and the superintendent said, "This is not anything that we need to wait on. We have to basically tell the bus company that we want to move the bus stop, and they will move it for us." That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Oh, and our next meeting? Our next meeting is December 5th, room 118 at the high school, 5:30.
I'd just like to congratulate the boys cross-country, Division Five champs. Again, great job by Coach Heniger, and also wish the girls luck tomorrow in the state semifinals in soccer, so, tomorrow night at seven o'clock, so. I guess I can't go, I have to go to a school committee, city council meeting. Mandated by the charter. Yes. Anything else? That's it? Okay? License and permits?
Motion to remove Communication 100.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.